This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, well, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the May 31st, 2022 Lake Stevens Sewer District Board Workshop. It is four P L or 1600 hours for people that want to go military time. It is a workshop, so today it's just a lot of discussion. There were a couple of things on the agenda. Present on the agenda apparently, but I know staff will give us updates on that. So all three commissioners are here. We have staff and we have members of the public. We have Councilman Pete Shing. He gets the head of the table. Oh, and we got Gene on the board. There we go. Yep. So a couple of folks on the virtual also with that being said.
There we go. Okay, so the first option or the first item on the agenda was talking about the field operations relocation and maybe some options that we kind of come up with as a starting conversation to try and give you guys time to talk and give staff direction on what you want to do moving forward. So currently, the field operations, we rented a facility from Thomas County P U D. It's 4,000 square feet with a 1,200 square foot second floor that's in the shop. That's not my cursor up there, is it? Okay, here's the shop building here. And then there is a portable, basically, that's 880 square feet that they use as their office space. They put the depth in there and a projector. And we have eight vehicles over there. There's also a utility trailer and a mobile generator. All of our tools, our equipment, our supplies, our off-site records retention is all over there. We also have laundry and showers. And we don't pay very much for it. So we're right now, we're paid 37,248 per year for that facility. So that's really cheap. So when we're comparing how much we'll be saving out of rent to what we have to work with, not a lot yet. One of the downsides over there is we basically have like dial-up internet. It is really, really slow. And so we use hotspots all the time in order to try and connect. Our CCTV truck really needs internet in order to download all that footage onto the network. And right now, we're trying to do this workaround and it takes about a three-day process to get the footage off the truck. And so that's one of the things we started looking at and asking the county a few years ago, it was going to be like $60,000 to get internet over towards that building. That was a question. Now they're saying it's not $10,000 to get internet over there. That sounds a lot more doable when you're talking comparison-wise. So we didn't want to invent that if we didn't know if we're going to be there long-term. So we reached out to P U D because right now we're on a month-to-month. They didn't give us another renewal contract, which is odd, but you know, we wanted that commitment. They said, really, you're not going to be there more than that's worth. So. But when we're looking at planning-wise, I would suggest we kind of keep it more like a three-year timeframe. Even though they said four to five, it could be any month because we don't have a contract. So what we're thinking, must-asks for whatever we move into. You have to have enough parking. We need to park the backer and CCTV vehicles inside, such like during winter. Kind of like winterizing your boat, right? You can't let it breathe overnight and really can't go through the whole winterization process on it. And both of those vehicles hold water. So parking inside for those two big rigs. Housing for eight to 10 staff needs to have that laundry and locker room facilities based on the nature of their work. Need to have internet and office space. And the internet also has a connection for the CCTV. Parking for a minimum of those eight vehicles and employee parking and be ready. So came up with about four options and we'll kind of go through each of those. We could look for a new location. Probably one of the least practical options in, we kind of wanted to hit within the district or at least really close to district line. There's not that much available out there. And probably the highest cost of the options we're going to talk about. Well, but it's an option to be able to do that. Option number two, a few years ago, Gene and I had talked about, you know, moving into the city works, public works building. I put a call into Aaron Robertson a couple of weeks ago, but haven't heard back to see if that's still an option. I'm not sure it is. I'm not sure if they really do have enough room and enough parking for all of our staff and all of their staff. And because they're not even parking their own backer truck, they have two of them that are parking outside over at the D Camp. So I'm not, I'm not sure that it's really a viable option. But it was something that's been discussed in the past. Option three would be relocating to the wastewater treatment plant. And there's quite a few positives down there. There is some space. If you see the garage that's kind of in the lower left corner of this picture, there's room right next to the garage that we could build another, the building that's curving. But as far as space goes, there is space we could put or add on to a garage down there if they get the CCTV and projector. Plus, we already have the fencing, security and everything else. Now, we don't own the land down there, so we would have to get permission from the city again in order to make any modifications at all down there. But one of the downsides of down in the treatment plant, there really isn't admin space. For even the plants that definitely exist right now, there's a single table with chairs. And we have like nine staff. So there really isn't enough room that way down there. And there's no office space. The supervisor's office has been like a supply closet. There's no other office space down there. So, you know, we could make it work, but it's not a deal either. Okay. And then option number four is the empty lot right next to us, which we own. We own this building and the lot next door. There is enough room over there to build something that's about 55 by 70 feet. So we could put a garage as a facility here next door. And then we would have also the second floor for office space infrastructure that we already have here. So with that, I'm kind of thinking it might be a mixture of options, three or four types of ideas, but let us know what we need to look into further and then get better ideas of what we want to.
So if you built a garage over there, I'm just asking random questions, but those backer and the CCTV. So would that be difficult on a road like this? Getting in and out?
Yes, but not impossible.
But it's something you use daily?
Yep. Yeah, we do use it daily. It could be difficult. But it's not, not to a whole. I mean, we have UPS truck and everything else that comes through the truck as well.
So our truck, we've got the hose reel on the back end of the truck. So you don't have an extra four feet of truck out in front of you that you can't really, that would be entering the roadway before the rest of the truck does. So it's a bit safer in that regard. So you should be able to see, should be able to see with plenty of distance to be able to get out of there and safely. Yeah, it would be, it would be a challenge to get around in that backer truck.
It'd probably be like the garbage man.
Yeah.
It would be, they would just, they'd maneuver.
10-point turn.
So can you, you could park the vehicle somewhere different and have their office space somewhere different or no? You understand?
Yes. Right? So we could like park the work vehicles down with the plant, stay in the parking lot down there.
And then work upstairs?
Yes. So they would report, get their ready, come up here and then have their office space.
Are all of them eight together working in the office or aren't they in and out?
They, yes. Yes, they're field services. I mean, they don't have eight vehicles that they would have to park somewheres and then get a truck.
Or just to give like the actual office?
Their office time is limited.
Okay. It's usually a morning briefing, lunch, and then evening closeout meeting.
Close-in training.
You've not invited one of our little annual get-togethers at the end of the year inside the little building that they have. It's raw inside.
I'm going to use the word plush.
If you, if you count all of the used furniture we found on the side of the road, it's flush. There's some nicer furniture I think they got. So yes, I went over there recently, you know, to grab the projector and it's like.
She's on a year extension right now. She has one more year extension that she can opt for. So the end of, what's the written contract would be December 31st of 23.
Does that solve the office space part of it? So then out that way would be cheaper square footage from a garage standpoint.
Probably.
I think 4,000 of larger square foot buildings permissible under the public, semi-public land use. But we don't know about impervious surface or anything like that. So.
How big was the retention system we put in before?
It is just the bio slail on the side of the parking lot right now.
So there might have to be a modification to put in a vault possibly.
That'll be a two to three million dollar garage.
Well, with that, you know, and I mean, I don't know the size or, you know, I mean, what public works is. I know that at one time, it was, there's three different, there's hydro is unlimited, leaves those small spot that I think they're gone now. I'm going to assume you might know. Gene might know. Nobody's leasing the hydro is unlimited anymore.
No, we're not.
Okay. So there was, I mean, we had a good size. The P V we used. Because we would put, we'd store our vessels in it and that. So. But knowing that, since I've went to city, the public horse department has grown exponentially. And I don't look kind of equipment. Our big concern would be CCTV and the back. Those are kind of like, well, CCTV is expensive. If somebody wants to steal stuff, that's only pertinent to our business, but you know, thieves don't care. They just steal it. And then the backer trucks are like fire engines. You don't want water freezing up lines and stuff there. So you want to keep those. Those indoors.
Is there anything at Hartford? I mean, from a storage facility type deal, I mean, ideally it would be co-located. You know, you wouldn't have another location. You'd be able to consolidate down to two locations. Ideally, if we built something, it would dovetail with at least cities plans or would it be useful? That might be very hard to predict, but be mindful of that anyway, and it would be affordable. But the plant, it seems like that sacred ground just from a footprint. You never, you don't know what the, right, the requirements in the future are going to be. You hate to go do something and then have to undo it because you need a little more square footage to be able to do whatever you need to do. So, you know.
I told Darwin years ago, the property to the south of that plant, that wasn't the moment, we should have bought that too. There's a little gully and there's another.
Yeah. You know. Can't have too much. I mean, but, you know, so it seems to me like the, all those clips and takes. If there isn't something that we can just get into another lease inexpensively, that'd be my first choice. But other than that, it's a co-location and it's a bill here.
I think those are your two that are probably the easiest. Trying to find develop a land in the area right now that isn't already spoken for, for either commercial or residential is probably zero to none.
You still have another location. Yeah.
How big is the D Camp facility for a expansion? Oh, go with two plus. It's not, there's nothing around it.
I think it's pretty much out.
Now the beauty water, that's power we're running from there, right?
Yeah.
Doesn't, don't the water folks have a bunch of land or room or whatever? Is that, how they are, is that like a, a different platform in terms of management structure? It feels like it to me too. My uncle uses, talk about it that way. And so that's the other kind of semi municipality in the area. Maybe we reach out to them and just say, we have this need. Yeah.
So why are they not extending the lease? Have they said?
A lot of like we've done before, you declared a surplus right now because you didn't need it. And then eventually as the district or municipality grows, you realize your space allocations change. So they don't want to connect to a long term because it's easier to say, if you're 30, they noticed. Don't go away now, just go away, you know, they need the space and that's what they want. Because it's actually kind of a nice, it's, it's a nice little place. I mean, I don't think a lot of people realize it because you have this big substation running.
Right.
So you really don't see it.
Exactly. We haven't had any, you know, issues.
No. We've had just simple off the fence and cut cables off and things, but nothing, nothing too costly.
Couldn't string a cat five cord from Hagan and say, hey, look, there's an internet.
Sets the $10,000 off.
Yeah. No, I think exploring either something here or, because either, either which way, whatever we do is a good year out. Plus whatever, you know, I mean, it's a good conversation because I think there's been a lot of little whispering on the side from P V over the last year about whether they're going to keep us or not.
You'd almost microwave it from here.
Probably good.
Okay.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yep, we'll go back, we'll work on that and come back with a little more concrete information.
All right. I have number two. Great. Can you put the, can you be able to throw that for me?
Sure.
Okay. So we wanted to take the time to invite commissioners in today to get input on our current staffing levels and kind of the needs we've identified for the future. And then just to invite your input and your expertise to the discussion. Staffing expenses account for 25% of the budget, but second only to servicing our debt, which is 50% of the budget. So it's a huge portion of what we do here. And then the authority rests with the board or special districts like, special purpose districts like ours. And according to R C W 57.08.005, the board must authorize a vacant position and establish the duties or the job description. It's not a good reason to bring that to you guys. Please sit at your feet. So we'd like to share a proposal and begin a discussion regarding the next five years of staffing based on variables we can perceive. One of those being the retirement of seven of our 27 employees in the next five years. These seven employees represent not only a vast store, the district's historical knowledge, but also wealth industry experience in over decades of service to the district's customers. And we want to capture that and transfer it, not lose any of it. You'll notice that the charts, the third chart, and I'll go over them all in a moment, goes out just five years. Because we feel like beyond that, there's just too many variables. We can't give a accurate staffing forecast. The majority of the staffing positions we're going to talk about have been factored into the budget forecast through 2033. We will highlight those that are and those that are not for you. And then it's worth noting that in the last decade, the district has added four positions. So which does correspond with the growth we experienced or the increasing regulations we're all experiencing. So four positions in the last 10 years. So it's, I mean, it's commendable to the team what they've been able to do. And as we look at recruitment and retention in this market, we prefer to promote or hire from within. That's always the first choice. We always post jobs internally first. And then if there are no interested parties, they go external after a week. So for many of the roles that we'll discuss today, there are current potential internal qualities that could be promoted. For a few, there may not be. And then, so we just invite you guys to give your feedback. It's a discussion the whole time. And then also know who are very conscious of expenses and we are applying lean principles that we've been learning to all of our departments and just making as efficient as possible and making great strides with that. So we don't, with some respect. So much you're dealing with. So let's go over the forms really quick. This first one is our current form chart. There are 27 bases and then a few big intervals. That's kind of there for your, that is, take a look at. The second form is our job classifications with the rules we're going to propose. And that has salary ranges. So it's been rated that those positions will be at and the range for the salary. The third is the one I'll be going through with you, the third form, and that is kind of the amended work charts. And so let's go over that legend at the top there. Top right, that blue flower star thing is going to help us, help you and see what we need. The timing of these roles, right? So an A means we need now. A B means probable need within one year. A C next to the box means that in the next two to five years, we're going to, I think we'll need that role. And a D is no foreseeable need. So we're going to talk through every role that has one of those gray star flower things next to it. You'll also see next to the legend that any new positions with a pound sign are already included in that budget forecast. That was used in the last discussion you guys had. You'll see two, the three main departments are noted with the red dotted line around. So the first one is that wastewater treatment plant there on the left. Those people all go together. Then we have the field to the right and then administration. And we've added a column called the technical staff. So we'll look at that one. And then it also includes accounting and H R and customer service. All right. And then the colors, you guys are black. Our management is gray. Kind of the leads of departments are green and then the rest of staff are blue. And so those dark colors are already boxes that are, you know, they're in the plan already. They've been approved. The lighter colors are the proposed positions that we're going to talk about today. So we're going to move top left to right. All right. So let's start with the waste. First of all, are there any questions? That.
Better said, no.
Okay, good deal. Awesome. All right. So we'll start with the plant. And with that wastewater treatment plant supervisor, when that hire was made, it was with a five-year term expected. So that puts about two years into that term. So we know in the next year or five, we'll need to. We hire that and that's a C. That's why it's got the two to five years next to it. That person, the candidate, needs to be certified at a three or higher for us to be able to keep our permit. So that's qualification is required there. Next up, if you guys want to throw any thoughts or comments with each position, we can do that. We go by department. Okay, great. All right. And then with the, the next one of the wastewater treatment plant maintenance lead, this has a B next to it because this person plans to retire in the next year. And this person carries, I mean, an enormous amount of plant knowledge. So we really want to overlap with that person that we hired there. We think at least a month of overlap would be helpful for them to be able to transfer all that knowledge. And they need to have a strong mechanical background. This person is an operator, but they also have a strong mechanical background.
Do you think a month is real?
Longer than that would be ideal, but minimum of months to overlap is.
Just, you know.
And really because that position is a department of one. We have operators and then we have maintenance, but we only have one maintenance. Yeah. So they can see all of it. That's the second backup for them here.
So yeah, so this plan, when it's a single entity, I would say, I would think more like three. Right in my head. Planning suggestion. Well, it's. Backup in the, you know, if it's a, you know, the skill set that we have multiple people at different levels, that's a different.
Yeah. Something like that. You have one and it's going to be a, I mean, a B even seems tough in a way because it's, you know, the transition of like 20 years' worth of, of knowledge in 90 days, that's going to be like, good luck. You know, because if it's like most organizations, if not all, no, that was written down. It's all verbal and that's how we pass information with the intentions, but the actions.
Work for the Native Americans for millennia.
And the plant really do operate in an apprenticeship type model training. So we'll have them longer.
Yeah.
The next one, that maintenance operator, the light blue with a C plus and a hashtag. That one is currently in the forecast 2027. So it's corresponding to the aging facilities, right? That's why that person, we would like to make that maintenance department to employees at that time. Because we have greater needs, not less. The next one up is the lab analyst. There's an A next to that. That person is set to retire December 22. That is coming really soon. That's a 30-year employee. It's a lot of knowledge. The only, again, the only in that department, the only lab analyst we have. And then also carries enormous amount of plant knowledge. So that one, we're going to come asking for three months for that replacement. And that gives our new tech the time to experience the quarterly testing that they have to do. It's a little. And it was important to test. And then that lab analyst is also going to be working with our supervisor for the next six months to work on more transfers and all that. Thank you so much. The last one on the left there is that seasonal worker. That, that doesn't take time away or work away from existing staff. It's a part-time, summer help type person. It's just a summer deal and it's usually very project oriented. We missed our window for this year. But I think for next year, they would like to have someone like that on the team.
In December four.
Yeah. It's a great, we've gotten hired from that group, so it is a useful position. You'll notice here on the right, the next column over on the wastewater treatment plant, they're all have the operator one through three. They're all acceptable certification levels. The two of over, two plus are useful to us because that person can work alone. And they can do weekends. They can come on call in the evening. So we do definitely need a mix, right? We like to have that O I T, that one starting out all the way to a green. And also useful to note during, in the plant and the field, these folks can self-promote. We offer lots of training and then they get the experience so they can move up to the two or the three with time and with testing and such.
Ecology holds, they have a minimum standard for who qualifies for the certification. They have to have education and experience to be able to qualify for the next level of test.
And that top right box with the A, that's open. We have an interim person in that role right now, but that senior is open at the moment. Any comments on plant field next?
The only one I have is though you've got the four wastewater treatment operators, one through three.
Yes.
What are their current levels? I mean, are they all?
We've got.
Mix.
Yeah.
We're not being cheating and going back and looking possibly.
So currently in that column, the senior segment and then the next four. We have a level four operator, two level twos and an operator.
And our maintenance lead is also a two.
Maintenance lead is a level two and our lab analyst is actually a level three right now. And our supervisors.
And we need a four.
We only need a three.
We need a minimum of a three in order to be the operator in charge of the plant. And to take any shift without the three there, you have to get lead to level two.
Is the, are the As, are we actively recruiting for the As now?
Well, in that case, yeah. I mean, there's a timeline. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And how long does it take from the time, have we found recently in this market? Or maybe our peers to go from a, yep, let's recruit to, yep, we got the right person in the seat and there's a lot of knowledge. What does that one, or what do we think that one looks like?
Well, the last one we recruited or hired was an OIT.
Right.
And actually that one, we had a lot of applicants, a lot of choice.
It would be an easy one.
Yes, yes. Prior to that, we got in a trained operator, a level four. And actually that one was fairly easy as well, but I think it's because we got lucky. We didn't have a huge pool to pull from, but it happens. Our peers are seeing it much more difficult.
The best I can do in the private side is about sixty days from the time you drop the flag. Actually, you spin up some recruiting in a couple of weeks. It takes a couple of weeks minimum to be able to get them through a process. If everybody's on point, you got another two weeks minimum. Sometimes you gotta move in there or whatever. So if everything hits stride perfectly, sixty is like the, the best case. And ninety is probably the outer end. Okay. Is that so? All right. So all those, especially in December, start walking that back right from December. You're, you're, you're in the, you're in the fall. You want thirty, ninety days overlap. You're in the summer, you're now.
Right.
Right? Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And then even some of them that, you know, we've included in the forecast or were already included in this year's special. We've been holding and going a little slower, not knowing what exactly was happening with the rate increase and things. That has happened as soon as we kind of forecasted, we were going to do that.
Right.
So we've been a little gentle.
Still another question. So like I know in the law enforcement arena, you see a lot of recruitment and everything else. Are we seeing the issues for neighboring jurisdictions having to come up with recruitment signings and?
Yes. There's been, I mean, we've seen multiple strategies signing on the incentives for leaders from people come here.
Right, right.
You know.
Yeah.
It's making sense and other things like that.
Well, it's becoming more and more because as people have to have a certification. You're like Charlie and the Chocolate. If you got the golden ticket, you can kind of pick and choose. I mean, that's what you're seeing. I mean, it's. I mean.
Well, draft it all upwards too, right? Because I, so I, private side is no different. We bring in a cohort of new project managers. They come in, we have them at a certain grade level. But to get them to come from universities to be competitive, we bring them in at a level that is sometimes a skosh higher than the folks that have been there for. And so from an equity standpoint, you gotta, you gotta fix that, right? So, so that's a, it's a, it's a draft upwards to make sure you have equity for your people that are here as well. So, yeah. I do think we're at the, we're off the top of this, you know.
Please, it has to be.
I think we're, it all ends badly.
Well, no, and I see it because I mean, I was just, you know, what brought it was like Pierce County. I mean, like Everett PD, if you wanted to go work for Everett PD, there's a fifteen thousand dollar signing bonus for a lateral.
Like Danny's always flushing cash.
I know, they have more money than, yeah. I love teasing it, but, but you know, but there also what's coming in is something like Pierce County. I think Pierce County Sheriff's Office was looking at like retention, to keep people, like a ten thousand dollar retention or something like that. Don't leave. Well, I'm like, wow, no, I get it if you're trying to attract, but now we're paying for. It's the market sometimes and I just didn't know it. I mean, to get somebody, because the fear is making sure we have the people we need in place to.
So what's the incentive like for these lower operators to gain addition? Do you pay for their training?
We do pay for training.
And then like what is their incentive? I know they'll make more money, right? But besides that, like what?
This is a super well-funded school district. But there's also certification pay. This is essentially two hundred or fifty for.
The district pays?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty publicly standard like in law enforcement. They'll give a percentage like for your degree is or your specialties that you're working. So.
I didn't want to be, yeah.
Well, to your point too, other districts are, you know, we're looking at maybe the seven out of twenty-seven employees that are retiring within five years. Twenty-five percent of our staff, huge now and other districts are experiencing that same thing. They're all trying to retain those and fill with the thing pool with the. It becomes difficult. But if you're, we hire in at the, come in the entry level and we train you. Yes. But that just means we have a minimum of about two years before we let them be on call and work by themselves. Yep.
See, and have people that wanna train up too.
A lot of train up.
True.
Well, it's one of the bigger places, law enforcement more. So everybody thinks the grass is green on the other side. So they walk across the street.
You seem that way. Oh, we got one of those. If you want to drive a semanish, that's where.
They're just sort of bright water. That's what they look at because in King County, big government, they can get more money because he gets this well.
We've had good luck with people who don't want to commute.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
A lot of our folks, the poor people are in the works, like the work that I can do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Which we like. All right. So next up is the field department and boy, it's probably the, there's the lease line on here. Bottom left, there's an A next to the collections specialist, one through three. And with the hashtags, it's in the budgets. I see my notes on that one. So this one's already in the budget for the fourth quarter. We would like to propose moving it forward a bit. Because right now we have odd numbers. The teams go out in two. So right now we have two and one odd person. And if we had three full teams, it would just be more efficient if we get our, more of our maintenance done. So that's the proposal there. And we feel like the expense part of the balance of the fact that we didn't hire a budget seasonal. Somewhere in this, in the field that had been approved last year. So we didn't have that history. But we would like to do that next year, the seasonal worker for the field also. And that's on there. And then the collection specialist, the C plus person is really only out this five plus years. But that's some entirely right beyond the five-year mark. So we just want to have that in mind also. It should be more efficient for that department to have a lot of their teams.
The field teams that essentially their, the daily tasks boil down to three essential tasks. We CCTV, we clean sewer lines and then lift station maintenance. And all of those tasks are basically funny things. You have to have two to do any of those. So right now we've got five people to split those three tasks with. And so there's always an odd personnel and one of the tasks and the lift stations end up taking priority. So yeah, then added staff will allow us to get three crews out.
And that's for, that one was already included in the twenty twenty two budget.
Any comments for the field?
No, I mean, I think that if you're looking like you get, you need to move things around. No seasonal coming in this year and it was a budgeted item, you can reallocate those dollars to move things. You know, but I like to get it in there.
Let's move into the administration then. And the new column here, we're calling the technical staff, right in the middle of your paper. The top is the GIS that, you know, we already have that person. That person has four jobs right now. So they have GIS development and asset management coordinator and inspector. We're finding that's a little bit much for one person. And proposing that one below them, the GIS and asset management, didn't hire that soon. I think we hoped to do that one in January, but that process is pushed out. So that's in the budget, but that's gonna help that team a lot. Because this development is slowing, except it's more complicated now. There aren't the big plats. It's, you know, it's little deals. And they're just more complicated for our team to work with and that will help them out. Underneath that one, the instrument and control specialist, that'd be next to it. So that, I'm gonna read this part. How do you say this? So this role would maintain the control system network, SCADA and instrumentation equipment at the wastewater treatment plants and the sewer pump stations. That includes calibrating instruments, troubleshooting and modifying existing PLC and SCADA programming, maintaining control systems networks and performing various other tasks, including electrical work. So allowing a personal electrician's license, which would really be beneficial to the district right now. So this instrument and control specialist would provide critical input into design, decisions for district upgrade projects and work closely with the district's operations staff to provide solutions to simple and complex design and operational problems. This is interesting here because last year in, we spent a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, a little more than that. With our systems interface, kinetics, Cummins, QCC and DALL. Those are all vendors, right? If we could move some of that salary over into a person who has that as part of their skillset, it really could help the district solve a lot.
We've talked about electrician for a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we kicked it around for a long time to have somebody who's, I just follow in somebody when we need.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it won't totally eliminate our need for outside help, but it would reduce that significantly and make us a little bit more nimble in being able to address problems quicker.
There's probably a, a CD aspect to it as well. I would imagine, you know, you have something that is a problem. Want to fix the problem.
Yeah. Yeah.
John, you were saying the insurance is gonna be over time, even getting less money for that kind of problem. Like if you have some kind of data.
That'll be for the IT.
Over the IT, so let's talk about that one then. Segue, totally planned that the information technology specialist, they're listening to see you right now. And, you know, we already have a contract with Homage County for IT, but there are just a lot of gaps. And it isn't necessarily the strong suit of any of our current staff who aren't already maxed out. Anyway, so we, somebody like that would help us a great deal around here to work with Homage County and then help us with all that software that Homage County does not support.
Yeah, they don't manage our stuff.
Exactly. So they don't manage our software. They also do not touch our data network at all.
I wouldn't either.
We need somebody who will understand something at least to be okay on.
Yeah, well, to be able to speak in a thing with JD and.
Yeah. And like Rose was alluding to is that cybersecurity and insurance, it's harder and harder to find people that will ensure cybersecurity and the premium gets higher and the amount covered keeps getting lower. I think right now our policy only covers a very small amount and would not cover a big data breach. So having somebody that understands the lingo to tell our vendors would be very helpful.
And it's one of the decisions that the state auditor office just recommended to be good.
Lynn, could you cancel this in Homage County portion? You have to keep them.
We don't have to, but I think we get the benefit of an eighty-member staff where we get to pull from all of those resources. But I don't think you're gonna find one person. It misses every aspect, not enough. Plus that also includes all of our actual hardware as well. And they have our network, they have our servers.
A lot of, when I was at the city and worked with the city's IT person before, they were always trying to move to a centralized server location with the county. At one time when they decided to do firework in this entire community, everything went to the county. So not only our city, granted, all these other ones were trying to get there. And it's nice to have. I mean, the county's IT department, they do handle a lot. I mean, we deal with a lot of this. They have to deal with a lot of it. But when you are dealing with different softwares, things like that, they get very, you know, they stand on. I mean, for us to even get a new program has to go through this vetting process with the county to make sure they're comfortable with the IT department before you get there. And if you're an outsider like the district, they're not gonna say, yeah. All they want to make sure is the state of reach their servers, but you need to vet through your people. So I think it's one of those that you kind of have to have, especially like I said, with, with the state out of it. I mean, that's, as we're seeing, the easy money nowadays is people taking over somebody's, you know, taking control of their, their network and holding them ransom. So.
I think one thing to point out of all the light blocks that's on here, really that IT one is one of two that we're asking that's new, that you haven't actually been, as many new things. But it looks like.
Yeah.
I mean, if this was twenty years ago when everybody was just starting to play with their phones or, you know, you had little those, what do they call it? Blackberries? Not even black, but what was it? PDA, you know, your PDA. Yeah, exactly. Before it actually got connected, you know, I can remember my old city minister, we had PDA's. They're like, ah, that's more of a toy than it is they could have. You know, I mean, you lose your phone for five minutes and nobody can do anything because they've lost, you know.
Their branch.
Yeah, to the world. So I think it's something that we definitely want to make sure our networks always, always be in control with, you know.
The final box says the process analyst and it's got a CD next to it. That role was vacated in twenty-one and the duties were reassigned to the lab analyst and to our GM. And then the funds were redistributed for hiring the collection specialist OIT and the plant OIT. But we'd like to keep the box for the future, perhaps.
But there's no funding for it.
Right, but.
Can I tell you a part of the story though, that you clawed back dollars to redistribute the higher needs?
Yes, yes. The next box over with a star has a deep star star. That is the payroll and benefits coordinator who vacated in twenty-one. HR covers those tasks now with GM as the backup. And it's working. So. It's one of those places where we've applied a lot of the lean training and it has really, it's my better process now and it's saving money. Don't see the need to fill that in the foreseeable future.
Never say never. You know, when you start dealing with a lot of members, I mean, how many, do you know, Gary, how many in the city has HR wise? I'm sure there's.
Oh, HR wise.
There's gotta be, I mean.
I did try.
Four or five. Yeah, three. Total staff of eighty-ish.
There are a hundred or over a hundred, I think, but that's simply a police department. So that's, I mean, it's good stuff. Staff, but yeah, it's forty-seven.
And their payroll is one.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. The next box over is that one at the top, their administration supervisor with a CD next to it. So not one of the higher priorities, but currently our GM does a fair bit of administrative tasks. She can get into the weeds for us sometimes with this whole administrative team. She approves call logs and does reviews and with this administrative team. So it would be good to in the future have a plan for someone in that space.
How many directs do you, if you, if you, let's say that box, how many directs would that give? Wastewater treatment plant.
To the GM or?
Yeah. Because you're.
Yep, two, three, four, five. But it, not the mountain study.
And with it, let's see if I can get rid of the E to, with it, six, seven.
Apparently I got eleven that I'll direct for.
Which is, but I always, I always have thought, a dozen beyond a dozen, the care and feeding wanes after a dozen. That's kind of, that's kind of, yeah, that's always been kind of the tipping point. So.
What I think is in the future, who's gonna be more needed, a GM's time spent on merging and that kind of, it's a different kind of brain energy and.
Dealing with the black boxes at the top are probably.
Yeah, no, she's hoping to do that.
It goes your, no, no, I mean, you really kind of look at standard controllers. You know, you really gotta take a look at it. It's like, you know, are we just flying out of the seat of our pants sometimes because we're not able to spend a ton of time that's really truly needed to.
And historically, you know, time. And historically, I mean, that was Tanya's position. And then when she moved to GM, it was that, she took all her duties with her GM itself. And it's working.
Yeah.
It, in my time, it's going to be re devoted somewhere else.
Yeah. Well, she spent a lot of the time prior to that is really doing that as the, you know, administrative side and then hopping over to there. But you do have to let go of things. I mean, it's, it is a hard transition sometimes with people. Because I know like when I moved to positions, I liked one, but I know that wasn't me anymore. You have to let go and give it to others, you know, because.
The correct segue is the next.
This department, the county has two retirees in the next year, really. So we've been talking a lot about restructuring that department. What's happened here historically is that people have come up through customer service to accounting and then they've taken some of the customer service tasks within to accounting. So we have, we have some tasks at accounting that can be moved back to customer service. So we'd like to propose that we have three accountants in the future and move that accountant one over into customer service. We rehire those retire. We think we have plenty of work to create a new customer, that light blue box, customer service rep two, that person would do the work that that accountant one is currently doing and some of the accountants who work. And we'd like to hire them, that customer service rep two, that light blue, sooner than later, so they can start learning the customer service tasks as well as learning from the two accountants that are here and the tasks they're going to take from that, from those people next year, so. We have a B next to it. Is it more urgent than a B as we've talked about restructuring that or is it still a B?
It depends if the two people stick to their current timeline of retiring or not.
Yes.
Each day they kind of threaten to go earlier.
They're like the doomsday clock.
My brother-in-law is going to retire and he says TBD. I said, to be determined, it goes two bad days.
That's all valuable, right? We're all about time, whenever they want to. But again, they hold a lot of knowledge, which is the two of them. And with the restructuring, it's going to take just a little bit more time to have customer service relearned and cashed off for the entire team.
Yeah.
You know, if we can plan on getting that person in by January, I think.
On the right side in the customer service column, you see a C next to the rep two. That's a person that's retiring in the next five years. Two to five. They're currently a point eight, but it's budgeted at full time and we will rehire it at a full time. Here. Within that customer, dark blue box, their customers was rep, that's a point six currently. And we've already, that blue box below with the A, we've already received approval from you guys to do point five FTE there, but we'd like to propose full time for that person in soon. Just there's been increasing workload up there and kind of get that customer service department caught up. They historically ran with three full time until 2020, when, I mean, 2019, when somebody went to part-time and then somebody retired. So they've been operating with 2.3, I think, the last several years.
2.4, but over time that you have a little bit of burnout.
Yeah.
Yeah, up there. And it's an extra burden on accounting because they back up all the customer service. So it's why when you come in, you think we have like eight customer service people, but it's because you have your lead accountant answering whoever comes to the front counter. Because there are people up there that are staffing to do stuff.
Taking in phone calls, right.
And taking in phone calls and interrupting them. So in an ideal situation, you would rather be paying a customer service person to do the customer service task than a customer service accountant to do.
So to me, this all has good logic behind it. What about putting you on some type of cable that says, we do all the As and Bs. Doing it all at once is not feasible, just to onboard people. What does that waterfall or whatever look like? So here's, here's the A and Bs. Here's when, maybe, because there might be some logical groupings that you want to do to be able to economize on training and be efficient. And I want to do two people instead of one or whatever, and I accelerate what you're looking. What does the logical groupings look like? What's that timing look like? And how does that put down to the current budget based on where we are? We're, we're five months in, you know, based on what our plan was, are we ahead or are we behind? What would that do if we, you know, filled those out between now and the end of the year? Or do we need to push back because of logical groupings and timing of bringing people on board? What does that do to, what does that do to the, to the budget piece of it? That's, that's where I would bring me some comfort and say, okay, well, yeah, it fits or no, it's, it's 100,000 over or it's, what is it? And that sets us up for our conversation then probably 18 months farther down the road in terms of. And you also see where, you know, where the relationship with the city goes and so, you know. That window is, is tight enough to where I don't think there's a, I would think a synergy discussion or something about it. Might look at some functions depending on, yeah, at some point in partnership in logical march towards someday before 2033, but I think those are immediate enough to where let's look how it rolls out from a, from an onboarding standpoint. And the logic of grouping and budget would be where I would go next.
And here we are on May 31st, a mid-year budget coming.
Right, so it's a good timing, yeah, it's good timing to be able to, I'd love to give Michelle something else to do, but it sounds like a dovetail and work. That's how you get a stunning task. No, no, that's, that's why this is very helpful, you know. Good outline, a lot of it, you know, didn't see long that the, heard pieces of the conversation, the electrician, the seasonal work, the looking at the accounting and mixing of roles, those things aren't necessarily do dialogue, so. Yeah, that's, that's my thought, just in some way, but I, my goal for commissioners is I think it's in place different or you got it differently?
No, it would be nice to see how it does have just a budget impact when you start to add somebody, you know, take an okay, these are like, you know. I did, the only thing I'd love to see, type of, was, you know, C is great, but two to five years is a big span. You know, I mean, it's, it's a tough one sometimes when you look at it because you can't just shut people up the door and say, okay.
Time.
You know, they make that decision, but it's nice to have a little bit of, I mean, I know we've got a couple of folks up there that are just pretty much.
Kind of like you announced your.
Yeah, exactly, you know, kind of constant. I like the doomsday clock, though. Less than 14 minutes, you just don't know. There's no two days about it.
My hope is by getting the As and Bs in and having a, you know, really tight predictable plan of staff work that gives you a bit of, and if you do some of that a little earlier, it gives a little bit of flexibility to tease out the rest of it and be a little more agile on the seas.
So the positions that are A and already budgeted for, they're not advertised, they're not like open, no. So what's the delay?
Waiting for the rate increase to take it back before we knew we had any budget left this year.
Okay, so after. So when would you, when do you plan on listing those? I mean, I realize this is a.
Two seconds.
Tomorrow, we know these things are happening and we held off long enough to save that money.
Right.
So I think we're in a really good space for especially the that collection specialist, one through three, that A, I think we can go out for kind of right away. And then the laboratory analyst, that's the operator scene.
Because we have some things that we put off till later in the year, but just saying we would, we would hire, but you're just moving things up from a different quarter from what we've already.
You also kind of might have a creep, you know, too, when you go out with some blocks and the advertising piece of that, get everybody in that interview mindset and all that stuff, so. I'd rather convince it to make sure it's.
And we did that last year when we went out for the collections OIT and for the plant OIT, kind of around the same time.
Yeah.
There were people that applied for those.
All right. Appreciate you. Good, yeah, okay, yes, thank you.
I hope it was helpful.
This is, this is a good format. Nice, nice work, nice prep. This is what we would call in my space, A, snap work. Where it happens.
That wastewater treatment plant is so critical as far as like getting in employees to want to have a future. I know they talked about that at one of the, I always say that name on the last one, about recruiting for this industry, how difficult it is. And so, you know, like administration, right, we can take from all the different groups, but that that is super important.
Yes, and there's a few local community colleges who've identified and talking to.
Oh, that's awesome. Yes, it's critical.
Let me tell everybody we know what a great career path it is. It's not going away, exactly.
And I think we're pretty fortunate too in that we've got a majority of our staff with a lot of tenure that will be able to, if not slip in to these roles immediately. They've got at least some of the requisite skills that.
I'd love to have an opportunity, creating opportunities, you know, got us to where we are. That's, that's awesome.
Well, thank you. What do you guys get some fun to work at? No, I mean, it's just when you look at all the pieces, it's just, there's a lot of, a lot of things that makes good sense. I'm sure that dividing, like you said, the GIS, the individuals that do all that, that one's one of those ones like, yeah, you got a lot of tasks.
We found a unicorn when we found the person in that role now. And, yeah, it was.
Rachel.
Yes.
Yeah, she's amazing, but, yeah, she's, we've had a pretty challenging, I guess, with the spring being this way, it's been all the contractors, all the developers are trying to play catch up. So her time in the field is a lot more than what's the original. Yeah, so.
We have a third topic?
You know, we, an hour meeting and we probably have, I don't know, one for the word.
No, I think overall, very good. Yeah, there's a bit of work. I mean, I think, you know, just going back to the first topic we've had about, you know, finding facilities, it's going to be more long-term. How's equipment and people? That's, that's always, it's a tough one.
Since we have Gina here, does she have any input on the public works facility down there? Do we have room for expansion?
The building itself, we might be able to expand somewhat. The office space is built out, but as you know, council member, we've been talking about other options for a new city hall. And we might be able to relocate a few people there and free up some space because we're, we're doing the same thing you folks are doing at the sewer district, just planning for the future and where are we going to go, so. I will get with Aaron. He was out ill and on some leave, so some vacation. So at any rate, I will get with him. He got back in the office today. And we'll circle the wagons, find out what we have and what we don't have, but I appreciate the discussion today. Good work over there looking at your options. And we also are, you know, trying to entertain the thought of what would it look like to have a facility on, at the other end of town, either on the south end or the west end, because it is such a long drive and it's not going to get shorter with traffic. So if the district is looking for another place to relocate on that side of the Highway 9, we would certainly want to be a part of that discussion. It just makes sense to get, have a facility over there, and if we can share facilities, that would be amazing.
Yeah, we build out more here or we build out more elsewhere, we build out more, whatever. I mean, as long as we get the space and it's a twofer with something that dovetails with the.
With everybody.
Everybody, that's goodness, so.
And we just go and tell Chief O'Brien, we like his property. He can't have it for Station 84 down on.
What do they do with the old police station? The libraries, they're, they're going to build a new library, so then what?
That's a certain hundred percent.
Oh, it's not?
That's probably not going to happen in the next two to three years.
Oh.
It's so, it's a reach.
Oh, really? Okay, nice to me.
Hey, that was my hope for so. Yes, it sank into the abyss. It was better than we had the little house in the front real. I don't know, we like you, but. No, when you start putting, you know, and sometimes, you know, I know that I, sometimes we would have to look outside of the current UGA, just, you know, there are some spaces that are still big enough that could be utilized for, you know, a yard or some sort of this, you know, could be, you know. I know when Chief O'Brien was looking at the property on 20th Street Southeast, that one time I had conversations with them because we knew the expense. Why not look just outside the incorporated city on the southwest side of Catalero Road on the park? Because there were some good sized pieces of property out there. You know, you could get a result as a public safety, and that way it really wasn't taken away from the design at what time of 20th Street Southeast mainly being a corridor of business. You know, and you already got a light there that could just spool that light up to change if you need emergency vehicles. Right now, when they ended up buying that property, they do that now. It's a nice piece of property. Again, you and I've had talks about commercial, you know, we need more commercial in our community than we need, you know, government, though, we're sticking in that space. Because we need to be able to fund it mainly, that's just the property taxes, so. But, yeah, so I look forward to, I mean, I think we've got some things in front of us. We can circle again, because I know we're going to have a utility meeting coming up this month, and here. In June, we're still in that. I know sometimes things get changed, but if, if, if that did get changed now. I think that's what we've slated, but if, if for some reason that doesn't go to. You know, if you could put that in 24 days. Yes, Ray, y'all know that map. I'm good for that. Yeah, so, well, anything.
I'm making my picture.
I second it.
It's been, we've been slacking in all the paper. Thank you, everybody.